All right, now being 5:00 or 6:00, we are back in open session. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. We have an appointment with Chief Osari. And are we swearing in the officers?
Tara's coming.
Okay, Tara's coming. All right, to swear in Lieutenants Paul Gallagher and John Chusted.
Yes, good evening. Thanks, sir.
Good evening, Chief.
Hi. Tara will, she's going to be the official swearing in. We have two lieutenants tonight who have been appointed, and they've been appointed by me as lieutenants for the town, and I'm not going to swear them officially. Just for the folks at home, and you guys, yes? Oh, oh my goodness. I'm pretty loud already. All right, how's that? Better? Okay, good?
Yeah, it's great.
So, just for the folks at home, and of course you folks, the lieutenant's position is the first entry point of an officer for a fire department. And lieutenants are tasked with carrying out the policies and procedures, rules and regulations of the fire department. They work closely with all the members of the department, and it's a big responsibility. I can remember nine years ago when I became a lieutenant, that first time sitting in the truck, the responsibilities that you have to protect the men and women that work with you in that truck, and of course, the community we serve, it's a lot. So, I suggest, and I have suggested to them that they get moving real quick, and they have done just that. They recognize the weight of the responsibility and the weight of the duty, and like I've told everybody that works with us, that we are now the stewards of the fire service. It's our responsibility to carry on the traditions and values of the Massachusetts Fire Service, and these men are those two guys. So, it's my pleasure to make them officers for the town. My big pleasure. They both bring very special talents that they have on their own, and they're going to do great stuff for us. And they have the support of the entire department and our community too, so I'm very excited about it. So, we'll have Tara come in and we'll swear them in officially.
Tara's here.
Tara's here, so why don't you guys come on up? Okay, Tara, would you?
I'd like this. I'm going over. It's okay, I just have to raise my right hand. Okay. If you can just repeat after me. I state your names.
I, John Lee O'Sullivan. Paul Gallagher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As fire department lieutenant.
As fire department lieutenant.
In the town of Plimpton.
In the town of Plimpton.
In accordance to the bylaws.
In accordance to the bylaws.
Of the town of Plimpton.
Of the town of Plimpton.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
Go help me God.
So, I'm here.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Now, of course, the future for them is to continue to serve and follow the rules and regulations and policies and procedures, and develop their craft and their certifications, and hopefully move up the ladders they go along, and I look forward to working with them, and I'm very thankful to have them with us. Thank you guys very much.
Very nice.
Come on over, see.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Sir, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to get together?
Really glad for you.
Nice, you guys. So, yes, thanks.
Why don't, just, why don't the chief with the two lieutenants?
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
We'll be cooking soon enough.
No. 7:15, we're having a meeting and greeting with them. Yes, correct, right, I'll be here. Thank you. Oh, yeah. If you'd like it, you can throw a little purse off.
Sure. And then why don't you get one with their families, too?
Yeah.
If you'd like to all get up, I'll take a picture of you and we'll get it in a paper.
Thank you.
It's a standard bootleg, underpives.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Pull up some, thanks. Your mom's there. With her giant song.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good stuff.
Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you so much. We'll just sort of look for a place where I can read it. Okay, great, thanks.
It's the most fun we've had in weeks.
I know. Fantastic.
We have fun here every day.
All right. So, we've got art at 6:15, so why don't we start doing updates and discussions before, for five minutes?
Okay.
Since we're pressed for time. Okay.
Green communities.
Green communities.
We made the submission, so we met today's deadline.
Yay!
So, that was good. It was a little anticlimactic. The woman from D O E R is on vacation, so it was just an automated response, but we're all set, so we are submitted. And I'm still going to be working with the planning agency for a while as far as updating some of the data. The important thing was that we got the report in today, and so we still need to go back there looking for a lot more stuff, even from FY14. So, we'll get there, but at least the submission is done, and we're no longer in any kind of jeopardy with the program. So, hopefully, by meeting this deadline, I believe it means that we are eligible for spring grant funding.
Excellent.
You did a great job pulling everything together.
Oh, thank you.
That was not easy.
Thank you. It was a lot, and I did have a lot of help. Bree was incredibly helpful. The people from the financial offices were very helpful, as well as both chiefs, as far as kind of pulling everything together. So, it was a team effort, it wasn't just me.
Well, I think next time we know what we need to do, so we won't.
Yeah, that'll be helpful.
This won't slip through the cracks.
Yes.
Well done.
All right. Fire and EMS consultant MRI, any update?
Haven't heard a thing.
Okay. All right. Affordable housing plan, would you guys want to wait, because we've got art in like three minutes?
Yeah.
So, we'll do that.
About the fire and EMS consultant, can, should we put that down? Do you want to just leave it there?
In a week or two, the draft should come through, so it probably should be on there because.
Right, there'll be updates. Okay, let's go back to the affordable housing plan. Colonial Power Group, Plimpton, Community Choice Power Group, plan opt-in, opt-out for town. Okay.
It's the longest title. The ATD guy on the radio this morning went through all those words and was like overwhelmed. I haven't heard anything new. There was the article in the paper last week about the presentation and also the news release with, I haven't heard any more. I think we had a couple bumps, but we've gotten the word out, and people have to, don't have to do anything if they don't want, and they'll save some money.
Terrific.
But this is for us, though?
Yeah, was the town going to decide if you wanted to do the extra efficient option or just the basic option?
No, there is the option, and it is in some of the literature, for maybe 1% more instead of 20% renewable, it could be 100% renewable. It's in the letter, and if anyone wants to check that out, go into Colonial Power Group on the web, there'll be a place.
Does the town have to do it too?
No, no, we chose, there are two options.
No, for our buildings.
Our buildings.
Our buildings we have to choose.
Forgive me, I'm off on a, I'm going to definitely shut up.
So, if we opt in, we're already in?
We're already in.
Right.
So, we could be the opt-out or opt-in at 100%.
Right.
When does our agreement with Matapoysit, whatever that was called, does that overlap this?
I think it's a totally separate thing.
It's a totally separate thing.
I think we asked that somewhere along the way, maybe it was in one of the phone conference calls, but totally separate, unrelated.
How can it be separate if we're going to get a discount on our electricity because we signed an agreement with the Matapoysit?
We're not getting our electricity from Matapoysit.
No.
We're getting a credit.
Right. But in effect, that's, this is sort of the same thing.
No, this is the rate we're going to be paying for the electricity that we're actually using. We're going to get a credit on our bill.
This is not the distribution, this is the actual electricity.
Okay.
But the electricity is not coming from here.
Right.
I mean, it goes through the, you don't know where it's going.
Right, right.
And that's the agreement we had with the Matapoysit people, was that by signing with them, I think it was all solar, if I remember.
I think so, too.
Yeah. All I'm asking is, is there an overlap so we don't sign something we have to then undo?
And that specific question was asked, and there was an emphatic response that the two don't interact or conflict.
Okay, so, do we have something in writing, so I can see that?
No, I can check with Colonial Group and get something to you.
Why don't we hold that? Let's hold it until next week.
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure we nail that down.
All right, so we'll hold, make the decision on our electricity until next week, if we're going to opt into the 100% renewables. Okay? All right, so now being 6:15, we've got Art Moore from the Board of Health to discuss the five acre rule.
Well, thank you, and let me stop by and apologize for wasting the board's elections time and my own because of not signing weather. I usually don't.
You've got to hold it up close to you.
Hello?
Yeah, can hear you back there.
I think you turned it off.
Should be up.
Hello? Okay. The, last week, there was a, was a, what I call a green sheet, put in the mailboxes here in town. It happened to occur over the weekend. I'm told that it wasn't there when the Board of Health left on Thursday, and that our town clerk said that it wasn't there on Friday when she left, so it was done over the weekend. Anyway, it makes some accusations that I find offensive about the Board of Health making changes. The lot that he is discussing, or has in question, is on, was on Lake Street, and it went before the zoning board of appeals. Town council was present, and town council guides the zoning board of appeals through the process. This particular lot met all the criteria under Massachusetts law of grandfather. And so, it was granted appeal. It's, I think it was a little less than an acre, but that regardless. So, the Board of Health, because it's grandfathered, it was a lot going back into perhaps the early 70s, long before the five acre rule came about and the 60,000 square foot minimum, the frontage and everything else went into effect in town. So, the Board of Health, it was reviewed by our outside engineer, which every septic plan is. It was reviewed by our then health agent Kathy Drynan, and approved by Kathy, and then the board voted to grant the septic system because it was grandfathered. So, I think one other thing to, the letter that was stapled to the green sheet talks about water quality and things, and Kathy Drynan sits on the same water quality board that this individual does, and she took, she had disagreement with the letter. She said, "No, you can interpret facts many different ways." So, and Kathy has a master's degree, full-time health agent, you know, neighboring community, so we took Kathy's opinion to heart. So, the Board of Health is by no means making any changes to this rule, and the same would apply. If you had a house built in 1953 or 1923, and you had septic pits, and your pits failed, you couldn't get a perk, you would need a raise system. Or, and if the Board of Health didn't grant that, you now have a dwelling that's worthless that you can't inhabit, and land that's worthless because you can't sell it, nobody could ever build on it, so, and that's not fair. So, you follow the logic, if something is grandfathered and built, if something is grandfathered, that'd be the case also, if something was built in 1995 and the system fails, we can't throw somebody out of their house. You have to make, and then the technology today is there to deal with different issues. So, without getting into the technical weeds, if you will, the Board of Health doesn't, is not doing anything that was mentioned in this foolish letter, and that's what I have to say on that subject.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in and sharing that. I would just say, in the future, if people have questions about decisions you've made, they should direct them to the Board of Health. You guys meet every week, every other week?
No, second and fourth Tuesdays of every month at 5:00 P.M. And other times, as necessary, you know, call special needs all the time.
Okay. Yeah, because I think this would have been easily explained.
So, yeah, I think I address it, you know, I know back the night that we voted this, and the individual happened to be in the Board of Health, and didn't like it, you know, and some of the things that are mentioned in here are called snob zoning, that's legal, neither is redlining. So, anyway, no, the Board of Health is not on any division whatsoever, it's following the letter of the law, and if he doesn't like it, change the law, and we'll follow the new law.
Okay. And you also brought us up the sharps container.
Yes, it's shown.
And this is at the transfer station?
It's shown at the health line. That is a.
Or this is what you give people?
What we give out for free at the transfer station, and they put their sharps in, and then they can bring that back when it's full to us, and we will give them another. Again, it's a free service. Different communities around, I think hall charges, there's a charge for the sharps contained, other people will look for donation, but it's our feeling that to keep it out of the waste stream, which is against the law to put it in the waste stream, that we can do that. We've also done some research, and any sharps that have been stuck to the front end with medication can be taken to the Halifax, excuse me, the County Board of Health, or there is a facility in Brockton, it used to be in Plymouth, they moved it to Brockton, and they can accept it. And also, as an addendum, the personnel at the transfer station have to go through annual certification to handle sharps, and they must pass it, so you just, not anyone should handle these things. All it takes is a needle prick, and you could wind up with something serious, not worth a chance. And also, we don't have any facilities here, or at the townhouse, or the transfer station to taking back unwanted medications. Don't do that. Usually, that's done either by police, because they can monitor if somebody's behind the glass looking out in the lobby all the time that they're open, so that nobody comes in and can grab unwanted medications, or at a Board of Health, if they can do it. And our hours are limited, as the townhouse hours are too, so nobody in this town takes unwanted medications. You'd have to go outside to get them.
Okay.
Are you going to put some procedures together, though, so that when somebody comes in, there's a handout that says, "This is how you dispose of them, because we won't take them here at the townhouse"?
Yes, yeah. We've got the, I don't know if it's typed up yet, but we will have the Brockton facility sharps with meds. Our fire department will take used sharps, but not with medication. Kingston Police Department will take used meds, but not sharps with medications. Kingston Fire won't take them with medications either, so we could get by with that, but we will put a sheet together to go with the memo that the Board of Health has sent, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, as to where they can be disposed of. So, perhaps, I don't know, we could talk to the chief of police when the new station is built, maybe there's an opportunity for unwanted meds there. I don't know, probably you'll call, his call, but.
I just don't think it should be the decision of the person, you know, when they come in the door, it's sort of like, "Where do I go?"
Yeah.
And we need a procedure that, so our people handle it in the correct way.
Yeah, and they did have, they did have that. They have the procedure to get rid of unwanted meds, which the police department put out, and so they could put sand or gravel in the meds, add water, and just make a mess of it, and then they could put it in the waste stream, or they could take it to one of these facilities. So, either way is acceptable. Sharps, no, they need to be disposed of.
You know, it would be almost worthwhile to have a little training class for all of us in the townhouse, just so that we're all ready to go when this, you know.
Well, I think they all know, there is a policy in existence, but I think.
Who's they all?
The, I think the town clerk's office knows, and I think all the departments know. It was just, I believe it was not clear that there were sharps in the box. They didn't know what was in the box.
Yeah, so perhaps it's a case where people need to ask.
Right, and I think that's what we've learned from this.
But, you know, because, again, you need properly trained personnel to handle that stuff. It's, I'm sure Dr. Russo will go along, but all it takes is one little.
But I agree, it certainly wouldn't hurt to do a refresher course.
I don't think it was as clear as.
And we can do that, we can set it up for a day during the week when.
Sure.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
We've changed the, we had the Camelot Drive address in Plymouth, we've changed that, but that's the address that folks had here in town, was that, and so we'll add the others to that, and we'll have a handout sheet in addition to the memo that we sent out to the board and the Town Administrator.
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful.
That might be something for the Facebook page, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think your idea around the new public safety building is a good one.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's US and the chief's, you know, domain, but they still can get rid of the unwanted meds right here in town, in the waste stream, if they put the sand or gravel or kitty litter, and then add water to it, put the cap back on. Now it's destroyed, nobody's, nobody's going to use it. So, it's safe at that point, and take your name off of the label.
Okay. Good information.
Yep.
Very good. Well, thank you guys for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to add anything?
Nope.
Okay. You, Tom, either, anything?
I was just here to support the fact that the Board of Health, just to be clear, I have my interest in one of the two lots, but the Board of Health never changed their policy, they nearly acknowledged the fact that there was grandfathering involved in the two lots, only one of which was, I was involved in, to be clear. But they absolutely, in my opinion, of course, it's self-serving, in my opinion, did the right thing, because there would have been some liability involved. You would have gone into the territory of land taking, and at the end of the day, if everything met D E D regulations in any event, so there really wasn't any harm done to anybody.
Great. Well, thank you.
Come on back in 45 minutes, you can have cookies.
Hi, Ken.
Hi. Can I make a comment? Sometimes possessions have run over, and people have been in the hall waiting. In this case, I just had seen your moment and misconstrued the fire group was waiting, but secondarily, if you are meeting, I wonder if people would know that the door was open, because sometimes you're, in the past, gone way over, and people dare not walk into an executive session, and for all I know this was an executive session, it's hard to tell when you're in the hall, if you're still in executive session, if you're in the dungeon, if there isn't someone.
I think there's a sign we put on the door.
We put a sign on the door that says.
Both of them. Both doors.
On the outside.
And there was a lot of noise out there today, and we couldn't continue with our meeting, so we had to shut the doors.
They'll be on each door?
When?
When we're in executive session.
Oh, I see, in the absence of the sign, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just really noisy out there, so we shut it.
Well, when we finish, we open the door and invite everybody in.
Yeah.
Which we did tonight.
Right.
Well, that was my point. Neither of the doors open. I wonder if you should leave one of the doors open when you're not in executive session.
The doors were open, Ken, but it was so, there were kids outside hooting and hollering, so we shut it, so that we could continue with business.
I quit while I.
Okay, that's perfect. All right, thanks, though.
I really did want to hear about the.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Watch the video. All right.
I have DirecTV, and it doesn't.
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube. Watch it on YouTube.
Plimpton Board of Selectmen meeting, and you'll see it right on YouTube. In fact, it goes on YouTube before ever you're 58.
Yeah, it goes on YouTube first.
I don't understand.
All right, well, all right, let's discuss that another time. All right, so on the @Wood Irrevocable Trust Request for First Refusal from Town, I believe we've got some correspondence on this, and the assessors would, or Allison had suggested that we not take any vote or put anything, actually, put anything in writing, because we already took the vote, because they have some paperwork they need to do before this is released from chapter, so it would just make sense that we don't send anything until they do what they need to do upstairs to, you know, sign off on this.
I spoke to him, Rick Leo, who's the realtor.
Yeah.
And told him what he had to do.
Okay.
And then went to what department he had to go to.
Perfect. Okay, so let's, we'll hold off on providing any letter until they've done everything they need to do to complete their paperwork.
Now, what we're talking about is Prospect Street?
It is Prospect Street.
Okay.
And according to Allison, they did speak with Rick Leo, and what he had told them was that, at this point, they plan on putting some of the land back in chapter, I think the bogs, and they weren't sure what was going to happen to the other land, but that was the plan at that point, was to return some of it to chapter. So, I don't think they're planning on taking everything out of chapter, it'll be by lots. All right. Plimpton Conservation Appointment Mike Madder, do we have an appointment slip?
And they did decide, Tara had looked up, if they had so many members, they'd have to, for their meetings for votes.
Okay.
If they added a member, that means now they have to have a meeting of four, and it's a good number.
Okay, and isn't it that we get a letter from the chair that recommends making appointment? Do we have that?
There is a, there was a letter there last week.
Okay.
I think that's probably.
The Plimpton unit, post a motion, okay, so they did.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Okay, all right.
So, just so I'm understanding, this, we are voting him as a member or as an alternate?
As a member.
As a member, and so that'll make seven.
I believe that's correct. I think Tara told me they had six before.
They have an empty seat.
Yeah, because that six, then, is a real quorum issue.
Yes.
Because you need four, so that makes a lot of sense.
They said if they added one more, then now they have to have somebody at the meeting for the, and they're still wanting to do it.
I assume that he would have to reclusive himself on the Maple Street.
Absolutely.
And that is noted, actually, in the letter from the chair, that he's very clear on that and clearly understands he'll have to reclusive himself.
Okay.
Really bright guy.
Yeah, absolutely.
And knows a lot about this stuff, and.
And there are six members currently, six names listed, so it would be good to have the seventh.
Let's take a look. Sure, go ahead.
Absolutely.
So, you're wanting a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint Mike Madder to the Plimpton Conservation Commission until June 30th of 2020.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right.
Congratulations, Mike.
Yeah, thank you for coming forward to serve the town. Actually, we'll go this way and then back down. All right, I don't think we were going to do any updates from you, right, for time?
Right, I think we're going to postpone.
Right, I think we're going to postpone.
Okay. All right, why don't we go back to the Affordable Housing Plan? Want to get back into that? Do we have time?
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
Okay. All right, so, John, did you get a chance to read it or peruse it?
I threw most of it.
Okay. All right, I can make your changes. What do you guys have for suggested changes? I know if you want to pull it, we can even put it up on the screen if you'd like.
Unfortunately, I had really just a couple of typo and formatting things, and honestly, I forgot it. I can send it to you tomorrow.
That'd be perfect.
I would just, overall, I commend the work of you and your committee. I really appreciate the four goals that you put up, certainly the one about increasing affordable housing, but especially making note of it being harmonious with the community vision and the rural character of the town. I think that was absolutely essential and makes it much more unique. And I will, I'm most of the way through it. I'll get through the rest of it tonight. I'll get the typos to you, a couple typos tomorrow.
Okay. Elizabeth, did you have any recommendations that you wanted to bring forward?
No, no suggested changes. I was very impressed with the document, and I thought that it contained all of the necessary elements that you'd want to see in a plan like that. And I would commend you and the other members that served with you in coming up with that. I think it's a nice way to have some measurable goals and be able to accomplish what we're looking to without any radical zoning changes or things that might upset the rural character of the town. So I thought it was very well done.
Great, well, thank you very much. Well, Lori helped us, and so it was definitely a team effort. John, did you have any suggestions?
I would say I was overwhelmed by the work that went into it, reading through it. I guess my thoughts were, okay, where do we go now?
The next step would be, this needs to go to the state, and it has to be approved by the state. Did you see any reason why you thought the state may not approve it?
No, no, none whatsoever. Occasionally, I know with plans of this sort, sometimes when it gets sent in, they'll respond with feedback and say, well, can you edit this particular section to reflect more of this or that? I wouldn't think something like that would happen in this case, especially where you did also have the assistance of the Regional Planning Agency. This is kind of what they do. But if that did happen for some unknown reason, we could certainly address it. But I think it looks great as is and should meet all the requirements.
Perfect.
My question wasn't so much around the process as around strategically, no.
The next step after it's approved by the state would be the development of a comprehensive permit policy that is going to be much more time-consuming than this, and really more important than this. And that's our policy on how we're going to handle these 40B applications that come to the town. And if we put together a quality policy, we can lay out, you know, the types of housing we want to see. We can lay out the exteriors, what we'd like to see, to ensure that this is harmonious with the town.
We have to do a certain percentage, from what I read in there, right?
Yeah, point, half a month percent per year.
So how will that happen, I guess?
That can happen with, by utilizing, hopefully, some town-owned land that, so it's going to be several things that are going to have to come together. What I'd like for us to do is to consider a warrant article that any land that is being taken by tax title is reviewed by Conservation, by the Housing Production Plan Committee, and any other committees that we thought might be interested before we go to sell it, so that we would retain it as either open space, if it can be used for recreation, or if it can be used as built-to-look.
Makes total sense. I think that's great.
Then we would partner with a local nonprofit, and they would build the house, and we would provide the property. So we'd be working together.
So something like Habitat for Humanity?
Habitat for Humanity.
Good. No, that's, that's, that sounds good.
And those are things that, you know, would have to come together. I mean, we've got a lot to do after...
It's not going to be easy.
Right. It would be a coordination of efforts. But having this, this sign-off on town-owned property before it goes to auction would, is going to be key in the development of affordable housing.
Right.
Because these guys can't just afford to come in and...
Can I keep that?
Can you keep what?
The book?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm with you. I, you know, if you look around at some of the other towns, some towns seem to have done a good job of putting together attractive, low-income, senior citizen-type, you know, and we certainly need it. That would, we all know the horror stories of what's going on. So this is the roadmap, and the sooner we can make it happen, great.
Right.
Yeah. It's great we got it.
It's step one. There's many more steps in the process, but this is our starting point, and this is our jumping off.
Well done.
Thank you.
Is there another copy of this, in case somebody wanted to come in and look at it?
No, because that was kind of expensive to print up. So I can give you an electronic copy once it's done, but I didn't have a bunch of copies made.
Maybe we could put it on the website.
I can get a copy made.
You're looking at my copy. You're not going to get it.
How about on the website? Or it's, since it's really a draft at this point, right?
It's still a draft at this point.
It's still a draft until it's approved by the state.
When it is approved, why don't we get a copy? We can get a copy at the library. We can get a copy here. But let's wait for the state to approve it, because they may make suggestions that we're going to have to change and...
And Elizabeth's suggesting on the town website, but I think once it's approved...
Yeah, but if we want to wait until it's finalized, so that people don't get confused. Okay.
Perfect. Now, is Lori submitting that on your behalf?
Lori will submit that on our behalf.
Okay, do you need to take a vote tonight to formally approve it?
We still need Planning Board to approve it, so why don't we hold off until next week? And we can vote next week after Planning Board makes their approval. I think they're actually sitting down the hall, looking at it right now.
She said they were done.
Oh, they're done? Yeah, if they want to come in and make a recommendation, then we could vote tonight and be done with it.
There was, while we're waiting on that, there was once some discussion about apartments in town, some that are recognized, some that aren't, that theoretically, I think this came from Dale, actually, that theoretically, and it was actually a pretty creative idea, that they could be reconfigured in some way that they could count toward...
No.
And that's not, that's not the answer I was hoping for.
In order for them to count, they would have to be subsidized. So the person, we would have to recognize that it's apartment, and then they would have to open it up to Section 8 Housing and get non-family members in there, or, you know, whoever's on the list, and then it would be subsidized. Once it's subsidized, it can count in the inventory. But you can't have a family member in there, or, you know, just not, it has to be subsidized by the state in order for it to count.
Has to be subsidized by the state.
By the state.
Can't be another nonprofit organization, because that...
I don't believe so.
That is too bad.
This is also one of, when you push back a deal and ask, where is it being done? There's no other community in the state.
Yep.
Are you supposed to make a presentation to them?
No.
That's what they're waiting for. So should I invite them here?
Yeah, why don't you invite them here? Yeah. Okay.
Well, that's unfortunate. That would be...
It's really unfortunate, and we pushed and pushed and pushed on that, because it really seemed to be a pretty, you know, it was pretty self-evident that this would be an easy way to get there. But if it's easy, then of course it's not going to work.
And even if not to get there, even to do the, get the half percent per year, which just totally insulates us from something we don't want to happen.
Right.
The trouble is, otherwise, the half percent per year is four or five houses, which is a lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot. But if we can start to, actually, it's not necessarily four or five houses. It's four or five bedrooms. So in speaking with Joy Marble, she said that most seniors would prefer the former, like boarding house-type setups, where there's community space, they each have their own bedroom and bathroom, and then, so they still have kind of a community sense in there, and they're not alone.
Which has become a trend, cohousing in general, in all communities, and like-minded individuals together. It's an interesting way to do it.
Well, I'm sorry about the breakdown in communication.
You got a mic and everything?
That's...
What do you want to say?
So we've been working on the plan. It was Carolyn DeCristofano, who was a longtime Planning Board member, myself. We had Dawn Hastings Eli and Sharon Housley, who were both new to serving on a town board. And we were working with Old Colony Planning Council. We started with Eric Aberdeen. I can never remember how to say his last name. And then we ended up with Lori Muncy. And we, they helped us to develop this plan. We tweaked it a lot, because we wanted it to fit Plimpton. We didn't want to make, change Plimpton to fit the plan that was presented to us. We wanted to change the plan so that it fit with our town. And we didn't want to look at any extreme zoning changes to make this happen. We wanted to make it fit and work within our existing zoning. So this is the product of what we've worked on with the consultant and with amongst our group. It was probably about maybe 10 more pages. Yeah, they're just, there was things in there that we didn't feel really represented Plimpton and would be in our first plan. We thought those would be really good things to add down the road, but this is our first plan, and this is going to be a living document that, as we find things that don't necessarily work, we'll tweak them and amend the plan and change things as we go. But we wanted it to be pretty general, but we also wanted it to be actionable.
I mean, what was the one thing that you came up with that really felt work in the plan? I mean, in what we have now?
Want to use the microphone, so then the recording gets...
All right. Repeat your question.
I mean, what's the one thing that we have in the plan that...
Need to turn it on, sorry.
I'm not going to hear you, but the at-home people will hear you.
No?
No, because it's, it's not going to transmit through speakers. But everybody at home will hear you.
I mean, what's the one thing that's in the plan that is relative to what we have now? I mean, we just had a discussion, and one of the things that jumped out at us was the County Road, the 165, just 40 units in that.
Right.
I mean, are we looking at another one of those possibly on town-owned land?
That wouldn't be our goal. What we had talked about was the possibility of duplexes, which are already allowed, but...
Two families.
Two families with possibly a boarding house-type of establishment, but nothing that large. The survey results came back that most people would prefer single-family homes, two-family homes, or like three-to-four-bedroom-type setups through like a boarding house. And what we had talked about was the possibility of restoring some old farmhouses and maybe make them multiple bedrooms, where it would be affordable housing, you know, partnering with Habitat for Humanity, something like that. So it really wasn't looking for large developments of that nature. It was more finding things that would fit in the town and sprinkle them through the town, so it's not all just in one area where it's affordable housing, but as lots open up around town. And we'd want it so that they, the way they looked would be harmonious with the town, that you're not going to look at it and say, oh, God, there's the affordable housing. You want it to fit and be part of the community. We want this to be embraced by the community, and we wanted to come up with a plan that we felt residents would accept and, and back, that they would support this plan, because it makes sense. It's not changing the community. It's making the, it's taking care of our own. We aren't looking to bring in how people from other communities. This is taking care of our own seniors who need affordable housing, our own veterans, our own disabled. That's what we're looking to do, is take care of Plimpton's own.
The group homes, I mean, we're looking on page 67, the numbers, and rentals, they said there's seven rentals as group homes. Do we have those documented anywhere?
This, all of the data was provided by Old Colony Planning Council. We didn't do any of the statistics. That was all provided by them. If you want specifics, I can get them, but they're the ones that generated the data.
They did.
They did. Deb?
Hi. I just checked with the assessors, and they say that we have 903 housing units, and the figure here is 1,038. There's quite a difference percentage-wise.
I think 1,038 is closer, because when we used to do mailings for the Denit or the warrant, there's over 1,000 households that we're sending this to, or maybe it's PO boxes too. But I can look, I can look at that.
Those were just residential, though, right?
It was how many housing units.
Yeah, it's up on the board, and I thought it said residential. Yeah. So there may be some things that, yeah, but there may be some things that are classified a little differently. I don't know.
I'm not sure either. But this would have all come from the state, all of the housing figures? This is all through probably, most likely, the Department of Housing and Community Development?
Yes, if it's, if it's that page that I can see from here, is that the SHI, does this say SHI?
Yes.
Inventory?
Yes, subsidized.
So those numbers come from the state, and often what they do, the reason why those numbers are perhaps larger than what we have on file in the town's records are because when they're looking, say, a group home, if you will, they are not allowed to disclose that much information about those residences on these reports that they provide the towns with. But they know exactly how many units are inside, and it's possible that even if it's multiple bedrooms, that they, for whatever reason in their calculation, are counting that as actual units. So they're, in most communities, you would find that there would be a discrepancy between what's on the state housing inventory list, as far as our percentage and where we're at, as far as getting to the 10% of affordable housing versus maybe what our assessor's office has on file.
That doesn't make any sense at all, I'm sorry.
It...
They, in certain instances, if there's a group home, for instance, to use that as the example, they may be counting the bedrooms within that structure as units, as far as counting for affordable units.
Right.
Which obviously, our assessor's office would not, would not look at it that way. They would just be assessing it as one...
One house.
Residential structure. And the state, I'm pretty sure by law, is not obligated, nor do they always disclose to the local assessor's office, oh, you know, we have six bedrooms in this house, and we're counting this as six units.
I see that the address of the group homes is kept confidential.
Correct. They, there's a lot that they have to keep confidential with respect to that, to protect their privacy. But that would be probably the largest discrepancy there.
In these group homes, they're considering seven total units.
Right. You've got your 40...
Is affordable.
For the woodlands. Those are all affordable. Then you've got group homes, and seven of those units are affordable.
Other than...
No idea.
They don't tell you how many?
No idea.
So we don't have seven bedrooms or seven houses?
Correct. It's seven rentals.
Correct, but if it's the one, right.
Seven rentals.
Seven rentals.
So if you get into a rooming house situation like you're discussing, if you convert two farmhouses and they got 20 bedrooms, that make that plus that 20, that turns our total for affordable to 520?
If they were, if they were all affordable, that would be correct.
Every bedroom?
Every bedroom.
Okay.
And then Cranberry Knoll, looks like there's four units that are owned in Cranberry Knoll that count as affordable.
Just a little 25%.
And the nice part, if I may add, about the way that this plan presents that is if you did exactly what you mentioned, say you converted a farmhouse and you had, the bedrooms could be occupied by people who meet the affordability criteria, you're not changing the character of the town. For everybody in the town, you drive by and it's the same nice farmhouse that always existed there.
Changing the character of the town for 40 units, I think that's a rather nice-looking project. It's in the woods, it serves the community well, serves the elderly. I mean, is there a need to have 50 rooming house rooms for our own local veterans or whatever?
Don't know. Yeah, don't know. That's something that we would.
You know, when you say rooming houses, I've seen a lot of rooming houses in my day. That to me is not a character for Plimpton, but I'm not trying to knock them, I'm just saying.
Well, not if it was a home, a large existing home that was converted where there were four bedrooms, each bedroom had a bath. Each of those bedrooms would then count as an affordable housing unit.
How do we control the townspeople, as you say, in these places?
Because you're partnering with a local nonprofit. And in here, we have stated that we give preference to local seniors, local veterans, and local disabled. So this is all about local. And we can do that. We can give local preference.
But yet you can't do that if you at Woodland.
You know, I understand.
The market also tends to dictate in communities how much housing, whether it be affordable or market rate, as far as how the market goes and everything. Like usually, the free market will dictate. If a developer isn't going to find a project profitable or if a project, even if you're partnering with a nonprofit, say for town-owned land, if the project isn't sustainable or if there isn't a need for that housing, people aren't going to opt to build the project. So some stuff you kind of have to let it run its natural course. The community that I came from prior to coming here had a very active housing production plan. And it was a lot more, it involved a lot more radical zoning changes and things like that. So I think as far as this town is concerned, and I came, I mean, I've been here a relatively short time, so I'm kind of coming in at the tail end of this. But in understanding sort of what they were trying to achieve and the spirit in which they were putting this together in, I think you have a solid document that doesn't, it's not going to create any radical changes or anything that, you know, people are going to say, "Oh, no, now we're being inundated with housing." It's nothing like that, but it's rather, it's slow measurable progress, which I think is good for a town of this size because you don't want anything completely earth-shattering in one direction or another. And I think that this does just that. It's very conservative as far as a plan is concerned. And I think it's allowing for a responsible amount of growth.
Two places, you're talking rentals or ownership?
That wouldn't be up to us to decide because we're not going to be landlords. The town, we don't want to have a housing authority, which we could have included in here. We don't want to own property. We want South Shore Housing to own rental property in the town through partners. Or people are purchasing affordable housing from Habitat for Humanity. They would be deed-restricted, but we don't want to own property. And that's, they do the screening, they do all of the work. We don't want to own properties. We don't have the infrastructure to have a housing authority.
I mean, just some of the controversy over the group homes, kind of what we have in town. I mean, are you anticipating a battle with every single one that they may do?
I wouldn't think so.
I also think maybe we're using the term group homes. I think what we were talking about more was living facilities where people could reside and occupy multiple bedrooms, but not necessarily. A lot of times, group homes are more geared towards people maybe with, I don't know, like more of like a rehabilitative-type setting, things like that. And they're two different things. Group homes, as I'm sure you're aware, are afforded their own sort of exemptions from zoning and everything based on the Dover Amendment and whatever. So that's not really what we're talking about here. Kind of a different population.
But they do qualify, right?
No.
No.
They're not counted as affordable?
No, sometimes they use the term group homes on that inventory that you see there, but it's more, I would say maybe rooming house is a more appropriate term for it. Typically, in a group home setting, you have actual staff members who are involved, you know, some on a 24-hour basis, depending on the facility. This isn't that. This is just another type of housing that would create an affordable option for veterans or, you know, anybody who qualifies as far as that.
Do they count in the grand total so that we have to take half a percent? They're just out of the whole picture?
No, they're, the group home on...
Mayflower Road, say.
Well, not Mayflower. Let's do the one, the...
Brook Street?
Brook Street. Does not count because it's not subsidized. Those are privately paid for. People are in there temporarily.
What about Mayflower, then?
Mayflower, if that was subsidized, it would count in the inventory. And I think that when they talked about it, they said that it would be, that it would count in our affordable housing inventory because the bedrooms would be subsidized by the state. The people who are living there are subsidized.
So when you say counted, do you mean we get credit for that?
We would get credit for those.
Oh, we guess supposedly we have, what, seven here on this list of groups?
So those are being subsidized by the state?
Those are currently being subsidized by the state.
And then what they do, they monitor it. It should say on there if it's affordable in perpetuity or not. And it's actually the state who keeps track of all those records. So anytime there's a change in who's living there, they make sure that the people still meet the criteria so that those units are in fact always guaranteed to be affordable and to be for somebody who meets the criteria. So the town doesn't monitor that. That printout that you see, it's available online. But all the communities, usually you get sent that by Department of Housing and Community Development annually. And you can kind of see where, track where you're at in relation to the 10% goal of affordable housing.
Are there things that you really don't like about it?
I mean, I know where they are and how many.
Well, you know because of your position.
And what we're seeing, seven?
Well, those are seven that are subsidized by the state. You may be thinking of other ones that aren't subsidized. So anything that's not subsidized is not going to count in this. If people have accessory apartments, if the person that's living there is not subsidized, those are not going to count. This all has to be subsidized by the state, whether it's Section 8 housing or if these people are disabled and they are getting subsidies. I'm not sure what all the subsidies are that are available to people, but it has to be subsidized by the state.
What has to be subsidized?
Their...
In order to make it to the...
Their...
The person who...
Yes.
Who is living there.
Yes, yes, yes. Their housing cost, the rent would be subsidized by the state. The state is paying for it.
So it doesn't mean that you have to market your property at such a level that is affordable, that is considered affordable by the state's statistics? That has nothing to do with it. It has to do with how many people are receiving?
I'm not following your question.
I'm not following any of this.
Okay.
You're saying that people have got to be on...
If, with these subsidized housing inventory, people are being subsidized by the state. There's also affordable housing that's not subsidized, that people with lower income levels can afford to live there. And they're renting it from South Shore Housing.
And still qualify as...
Yes, it would still qualify, but it's not necessarily subsidized. And people who are purchasing homes from Habitat for Humanity, they would be deed-restricted homes, but they're not necessarily subsidized. They're just lower... Yeah, it is confusing. So there's, yeah, two separate things. So there's people that are subsidized from the state. And then there's properties that are deemed affordable by the state that are either rented out by a nonprofit like South Shore Housing or purchased from a nonprofit like Habitat for Humanity.
So those two circumstances qualify for affordable housing?
Correct.
So is the goal here to get to the 10%?
The goal is to work towards the 10%. I don't know if 10% is attainable, but it's to work towards it. Half a percent a year and just to continue to work towards it. There were, and that was language that we were careful about too, was to meet it. We weren't looking to exceed the 10%. We'll be lucky to hit 10%. So we didn't want to have a goal to exceed 10%. Our goal is to try to reach the 10%.
How many communities and messages have reached 10%?
I think maybe one, Cambridge, I think. They're the only ones where they're really pushing affordable housing. I don't know if Brockton's at 10%. They might be. But very, very few of the communities are at 10%.
They were the only ones seven years ago when we first started talking about it.
But it has, we just want slow progress towards the goal.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, like we really, we wanted this to be something that people weren't, you know, putting up their hands and saying, "No way, no way. This isn't going to happen in Plimpton." We need to have a plan. We need to start working towards this so that we can control our own destiny. Because if we sit back and do nothing, we can have a 40B knocking on our door and we can't do a darn thing about it. So we want to embrace affordable housing, but in a way that works within our community.
And this is a... And in the 40B laws, that if we have a plan in place, we have the ability to reject any 40B proposal?
That's correct.
Is that what we're kind of looking to do?
If we have a plan in place and if we're growing by half a percent a year.
By half a percent.
Half a percent a year?
Right.
Then we can control which?
Right. So, yes, we can control the projects. And we were talking before you guys got here what the next step was. So the next step was, is this plan needs to be approved by the state. So once it would be approved by the state, then we need to come up with a comprehensive permit policy. And that's going to be really important to determine what type of comprehensive permits that we want to have in the town. So, you know, we'll be looking to work with you guys on that and bringing other people in to come up with a comprehensive permit policy.
Who goes to accept the plan?
You guys do and the Board of Selectmen. And then it goes to the state. And then, once it's approved by the state, we would look to do the comprehensive permit policy. And then we'll have to do some other things along the way to try to utilize, to make town-owned property, to possibly partner with some of the local nonprofits for friendly...
We have a lot of acreage.
We do have a lot of acreage.
Are you seeing it possibly? But I mean, once the plan, at what point, you know, do we have the ability to reject any 40B proposals? Do we have to wait for the state to accept or is this once?
The state would have to accept the plan. But it'll happen quickly. Once we approve this plan, we need to have it into the state by the end of this month. What do you think, Elizabeth? Maybe a couple of months for them to approve the plan?
Yeah, it shouldn't take them that long because a lot of communities already have established plans. So they just, typically, once you have your plan established, you have to renew it every five years. You have to prepare an update to it, the general timeframe. So I wouldn't imagine more than a few weeks, depending on their workload. I believe it needs to be done by the end of the month.
Well, I'd like for you to vote by next week at the latest. But if you're ready to vote now...
I think maybe we need a meeting next week just to deal with, excuse me?
Yeah, that's scheduled.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, recommendations you have for changes, just let us know. What?
Zoning-wise or...
We didn't really want to get into zoning. No, this is, no, this is the first plan. We're going to find things that work in this plan along the way and things that don't work. And things that don't work, we'll remove from the plan and replace them with something else. But we wanted...
And the plan in place will give us the time that we need to address some of the zoning issues.
Right. And we, and those were things that we knocked out of the plan, too. There were a lot of suggested zoning changes and we weren't interested.
Because if anything starts a fistfight in the town, it's zoning.
Right. There is the only zoning that is suggested in this plan and it's just a suggestion, is a senior overlay district where we could do something like a group home if there was someone who brought forth a proposal. But it would have to be approved by town meeting.
To keep the rowdy elderly locked in.
Yeah. So that's the only zoning that is in this. And it's just a suggestion, may not, you know, we may never do it. But we didn't want to change zoning in this plan.
So we're proposing a half a percent per year for affordable housing. And we've got a half a percent in front of us. We don't have to, we can reject the next one.
We can reject any.
So half a percent, what's that turn up for? How many units?
I think it's four units.
Five, four, five units?
Four, five units a year. And there's also something in here...
How many units, how many units do we need per year to qualify now? I mean, do we have a time limit when we need to qualify?
No, you just have to progress towards your 10% goal.
If you've got 1,000 units and 1% of 1,000 units that we have is 10. And it's a half a percent.
So five.
Five, so five a year.
Five a year.
There's also a provision in here, we talked a lot about nonprofits. That's really what, the way we wanted to go, was partnering with nonprofits. For profits, we have the inclusionary zoning, which is a zoning thing, where 25% of the homes that they build need to be affordable. Because if somebody came in and put in a 20-home subdivision, they can croak our progress. So we wanted to make sure that if someone was looking to put in a subdivision, that 25% of the units are deed-restricted affordable.
But that's not a 40B?
No, no, that's like...
Is 25% of the 40B, right?
No, no. Say Duxbrook Road, where I live. They're going to develop the road. There's going to be 12 homes in the subdivision. 25% of those homes need to be deed-restricted, affordable. It's not a 40B. They're homes. They just have, they're affordable homes. They're not subsidized. They just are deed-restricted so people who have lower income can purchase those homes. And they look just like all the other homes.
No, I know.
Every 40B does.
That's what a 40B is.
It's all it is.
Exactly.
No, Will, no!
40B more typically is one large building with...
No, 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 no.
That's not true. That's not true.
Well, typically, they are. A typical 40B is usually...
There's ones on, we got Lake Street.
16 houses, 25% affordable, four houses.
Is that Cranberry Knoll?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're all individual houses.
But they were also probably able to fit a lot more than they would have been under the normal regulations. So what I think Christine is saying is that we're not talking about somebody coming in trying to get around the current zoning regulations. It would be doing everything in compliance with our rules and regulations.
With density.
Yes, as far as the density.
Right. Right, right.
But if a 40B comes in, they can be on much smaller lots.
Right.
They can be on much smaller or they can go the route of one large building.
Kingston has that over at McDernall, 106.
Generally a much smaller.
Yes.
Right. And we didn't want to do that. We didn't want to reduce the density. We want it to fit within the town.
So, I mean, if you get a 12-lot subdivision, we'd get two units? So, I mean, if you get a 12-lot subdivision, we'd get two units on it?
You'd get two units on it, on regular-sized lots that would be affordable.
So they're not circumventing the units per... by the zone, is it?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. But so what's, where's the advantage to a developer to do that? Because if he can comply to the existing zoning, he doesn't have to make any...
He'd be required to.
He'd be required to.
He'd be required to.
But if he wants to put in 12 lots, do we have to be affordable, if he wants to...
But the zoning allows the 12 lots. But what's the standard?
They're rewriting it. They're doing the inclusionary.
You're saying, you only put it doing it on the...
No, I'm saying, if we did my street. But no, it's not.
Because if you didn't put 12 lots in...
Well, we'd all... We also talked about, in the plan, incentives for builders. I don't know. That's one of the next steps, too.
X amount of these units, but not for cost.
For cost, that's what 40B is.
Yeah, exactly.
We need to find out what incentives they would be looking for. You're right. And that's included in there.
You've got to track the land, and by the existing zoning, you could have 12 units there. Why would I go to the town and say, "Hey, I want to give you some X amount of these for cost?" And you wouldn't do it. There had to be some kind of incentive.
That's in the plan, and we don't know. That's one of the next steps.
Some of the incentive, though, comes from the mortgage, where they get their money from, right? So if they wanted to put in 12 units, and they went to, like, a government mortgage, the government...
Yeah.
Right. They would have to meet that requirement. If it's, what is it, FHA?
FHA, yeah.
FHA.
And we could waive permits, you know? We could waive all the permits for the affordable houses.
Potential people come and they get a good...
You know? The permit fees.
Might benefit the better. I mean, they may just sell a lot of talk individually. We never know what they're going to do when they do something.
You don't. You don't. You don't. But that's something that we talked about in the plan, was talking to some local developers and finding out what incentives they would want to do this.
And to develop the language to put in.
Right. And that would be in a comprehensive permit policy.
So before planning was approved, any 12-lot subdivisions, we get out two affordable housing...
Yeah.
Part of the zoning requirement. How much is zoning change?
What, for the affordable housing?
For every five, we're going to get one.
No, for every four, we're going to get one.
For every four, we're going to get one.
Right.
I mean, the language should be able to be developed and put in the zoning by the law, so... So we're going to get allowed subdivision control, because subdivision control law was written specifically for this. That we need, that might be where the difficulty is for what we're proposing.
This is, a first step is a living document.
Yeah.
I mean, it is. If we don't do this, we're going to let the developers...
Yeah, that may not work. That may be something that we have to drop, because it's not feasible and doesn't work. But that's what we're hoping. This is just kind of a group of ideas about how we can possibly get towards the 10%, and the half a percent each year. And that's an idea, is to partnering with for-profits and having some deed-restricted properties in there.
I mean, I like structural housing. I think they're...
Yeah.
So we have a deadline, don't we?
We do.
This year, and we need approval by the end of the year.
By Planning Board and us.
End of calendar year?
End of calendar year.
It has to be to the state before the end of the month. And before it goes to them, it goes back to the Regional Planning Agency to check it one more time.
The 18th would really be the last.
The 18th?
Because that's next Monday.
Week away.
Next week.
I just...
It's next week.
I forget posted.
No. No.
Just a...
This is, there's really nothing super-specific in here. It's all suggestions. It's data with suggestions. That's all it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a bunch of ideas. It's just ideas.
No commitment to anything, just demonstration that we're thinking about this.
Yeah. And that's funny, we would say that a lot. We're strongly considering, you know? The language.
If we have nothing, we'll be a lot better off with not too much than having nothing.
We didn't want to be super-specific. We wanted this to be something that we could work with. It just, yes.
I mean, the ability to reject a 40B would be...
Yes.
Right. And doing nothing is putting your head in the sand and just rolling the dice. Exactly.
So we're going to get it in by the end of the... Can state 40B end of the year? That puts us in this position to make decisions on this half a percent per year, whatever, if you say.
We're supporting the initiative of passing this tonight.
I think we're trying to set up an agenda.
Okay.
You need 40B?
It has to be on our agenda.
Yeah. You guys just need to vote to approve it. It's just a simple approval by the Planning Board.
Does it have to be on the agenda?
Does it have to be on our agenda, or is it supposed to be...
No. You need to just approve it. It needs to be, I would think, at a posted meeting.
That's what they're asking.
So that...
We have one tonight. We have a posted meeting.
But this wasn't on the posted meeting?
Oh, I don't think that matters. It's going to be in your minutes.
No, the agenda is also, it's typically supposed to require all matters reasonably anticipated by the chair, and you did not reasonably anticipate. So I think that...
We didn't reasonably anticipate it. We meant to have an agenda, but it was left off the agenda.
Yeah, because that's the reason you were meeting.
There was a miscommunication, evidently. I thought that the committee was going to come in and make a presentation.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
We were just supposed to take a look in both...
So do we have the bill and the votes tonight, or should we have the votes next week?
I'm unclear on the open meeting laws, on whether or not we have the ability to vote on it now, for instance, when we need to post this.
Do you want me to ask Tara right now? Then it can be done. Do you want me to ask Tara?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you just go ahead and vote it, and we'll check it out, and then if we have to, we'll vote it again.
You could also vote it and then ratify it at a posted meeting. Ratify your vote.
So they can be held against us in court of law?
We're going to take it right now.
I don't know.
But if we can vote on it, then...
Oh, that would be...
Do you want to start letting people in?
I'm a little uncomfortable. If this isn't on the agenda, I'm not sure.
It's in the minutes, the next meeting scheduled, the proposal. We will entertain a proposal by the affordable...
Yeah.
And it should have been on our agenda. It was not.
But I think the agendas usually say, too, any other business that legally goes before the board.
Absolutely do.
Okay.
That's correct.
They could always ratify the vote.
And I suggest we vote it now, ratify it at the next meeting, which will not be happening. Our next posted meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting would be Christmas Day, and we decided not to come in.
Oh, wow, that sounds perfect. Yeah, you could do that. You could do that.
They were going to present.
Yeah. You can vote it tonight, ratify it at your next meeting.
Which would be ten minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. That shouldn't be a problem, right? The ratification is...
I wouldn't think so.
Later, within, like, several weeks?
Unless you get two lawyers together, and they might...
Let's just vote it, get it done with.
Yes, you can, and you have to include it in your minutes.
It was included in the last minute, and we'll include it in the next minute.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the housing...
Second.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Yeah. We've got a long way to go. You don't need it.
No.
Right.
You guys want to hang around and have some cookies?
All right. So you guys...
So we've got to read through some correspondence.
Do you guys want to approve it? Are you guys approving it now, too?
Do you want to approve it, based on your minor amendments?
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's do it. Be done with it. Okay. All right. So, John, we're going to approve the plan with the...
With Mark's amendment.
The, okay.
Does the motion mean?
Yeah. All right. So I'll make a motion that we approve the plan with Mark's amendments.
Minor edits.
Minor edits. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Are we going to just zip through correspondence?
Do you want me to do correspondence in, like, the one-minute version?
Is there anything that we need to do? Is there anything that requires action?
Um, no. No, nothing immediate. We requested a site visit from Hayward Company back on November 30. They still have not got back to her with a date.
Okay.
And there was an email from Kristin Fichtenmeyer regarding road conditions on Montello Street. She also sent it to Jim Mulcahy, so I'm assuming he's following.
Perfect. That's where it needs to go. Okay.
And the rest is just...
All right, let's hold it.
Stuff that came in.
Okay.
Make a motion to...
All right, do you have anything?
Are we going to adjourn, or just hold it?
It can wait until next week.
Okay. All right. So I don't think we have anything else that's critical for tonight?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we adjourn our regular session meeting to have a meeting greet with our new town administrator.
Second.
A second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Good night!